Tuesday, August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Time is six oh one P M. Roll call. All aldermen are present. Item two, oop, sorry. Item three, pledge of allegiance and silent prayer in lieu of invocation, please stand. Thank you, everyone. Item four, reading of the minutes of the previous meeting held on July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. See attachment one. Counsel, what are your wishes? I got a motion by Lewis to-
Prove the minutes as printed.
Prove the minutes as printed. I got a second by Tim. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes eight A's to zero nays. Item five, consider for confirmation Mayor Zachar's appointments to various committees, commissions, and boards. See attachment two. These are as follows. For Board of Review, Jay Bemke at two nine three one, Eleventh Street South is appointed as an alternate member to term expiring five one two thousand twenty-eight. Also on Board of Review, Jerry Box, six four zero, Tenth Avenue South is appointed as an alternate member to a term expiring at five one two thou- twenty-two-eight. And then on Zoning Board of Appeals, Kurt Hoyer at four four three zero Ridgeview Lane is appointed as an alternate member to a term expiring eleven one two thousand twenty-seven. Any questions or comments? What are your wishes? Oh, I got a motion by Veneman, seconded by Tim, to approve. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes.
Aye.
Motion passes eight A's to zero nays. Thank you for your patience, everyone. Item six, consider and- Consider in selection of the qualified low bidder for the wastewater treatment plant Dewey Lift Station MCC upgrade, as recommended by the Wastewater Treatment Commission at its meeting on August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. See attachment three. Mr. Budzberg, did you want to add anything before we ask questions?
Not really, just that the Dewey Lift Station is a project that we've been looking to replace the electrical components on that for several years now. It is one of the biggest lift stations in the city, roughly doing about one point three million gallons per day. So we were looking at replacing the controls, VFDs, all the electrical components we needed to get that station back to where it should be for where the components aren't obsolete anymore, so.
Alright, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and, wait, what are your wishes? I got a motion by Lewis to approve.
The lowest bidder was Sierra Fox at three hundred and- Three hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the bid from Sierra Fox in the amount of three hundred and twenty-two thousand for the upgrade to the lift station.
Alright, I got a motion by Lewis, seconded by Austin. Any questions, further questions or comments?
I believe it was thirty- three hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred, just for clarification.
Alright, we have the correct number in the motion. Alright, seeing no further comments or questions, go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes eight A's to zero nays. Thank you. Item seven. Request for alderperson Katnaugh to take from the table and then to consider a process for the appointment of a municipal judge to fill the vacancy, which will be created due to the retirement of Judge Peter Castenholtz effective September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. See attachment four. Mr. Katnaugh?
Thank you. Motion to take this item from the table.
I get a motion by Katnaugh to take the motion from the table, and I got a second by Mr. Tim. Any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes.
Aye.
Motion passes eight A's to zero nays. Mr. Katnaugh?
Thank you. Obviously, we discussed this thoroughly last month. We even had a few votes on it. However, I believe we need to make a decision this month, being that the retirement is September thirtieth. And now that the mayor is here to break the tie, I say we do so. Therefore, I make a motion for the council to appoint a judge to fill the vacancy of municipal judge until a special election to be ordered for April seventh, two thousand twenty-six.
Alright, I get a motion by Katnaugh. Can you repeat your motion, please?
Sure. Motion to have the council appoint the municipal judge, a municipal judge, to fill the vacancy until a special election to be ordered April seventh, two thousand twenty-six.
Good. Alright, I got a motion by Katnaugh, seconded by Tim. Mr. Lewis?
So when this was last brought up, I was in favor of having a special election because I think it's important that the citizens of Wisconsin Rapids get to elect elected officials. However, it is kind of a unique position as far as being a municipal judge position. The decisions they will be making are going to have impact on individuals, but necessarily won't not have as big of an impact citywide as such an alderperson's position. The other factor to take in consideration is the cost. We didn't know the cost at the last time we discussed this, and the documents that the clerk provided us with estimates on the cost for the total estimate cost for a special primary, if there was a primary and special election, could reach to the tune of thirty-six thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. So I think the fiscal responsible decision would be to hold the municipal judge election in conjunction with a regular scheduled election to save that, that's thirty-six thousand dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Palmquist.
I understand that it is in our authority as a council to elect or to appoint a judge until a special election. However, I echo Alder's Austin's comments during the previous meeting about how I have no, I'm not qualified to determine if someone is a suitable judge or not. And I, out of curiosity, has anybody asked Judge Castenholtz if he would remain as our municipal attorney until April?
I have not. I, we, I have not specifically asked him for that. I did have an hour-long conversation with him. He didn't offer it up at that time, but then we have heard-
I talked to him briefly at the courthouse about a week and a half ago, and he indicated he'd be willing to help us out until we got through this process. So his word is gold in my book. I would believe he's going to help us out.
Okay, thank you.
Right, I talked to him Wednesday evening, and he didn't say anything about that, but also he's, he's moving. He will no longer be a resident of Wisconsin Rapids on September or October first. So he, he would need to vacate his office when he moves, and it's my understanding he's planning, at least when I talked about him Wednesday, he's planning on, you know, moving the end of September, right? September thirtieth, yes. So, and he expressed that it would be good if you appointed a judge and held a special election in the spring, so. That was my conversation with him, but.
Is there any other input on that? Sorry. Mr. Austin?
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Pluse's comments about fiscal responsibility. It's approaching nearly forty thousand dollars. If we have a special election prior to April, it's, it's much more than I was anticipating. But to Alder Palmquist's point, I think we discussed previously that our chief justice, municipal justice, could potentially appoint as well. And I think that would be a direction I would rather see this go. I would support a motion that indicated the chief justice would have say on who's appointed until the election.
Just a little bit more information along those lines, go ahead, Sue.
Right, that would be an appointment by the district judge. It would be another municipal judge that's serving somewhere else. They probably would not be a resident of the city of Wisconsin Rapids. They would need, we'd need to negotiate with them what their fees will be to be the municipal judge. And then that would be, I guess I'm assuming then that appointment is going to last until April. So, yeah, I just wanted you to know, be aware of that.
Mr. Katnaugh?
Thank you. So my motion stands, but I just wanted to add to it that it is important to me that whoever becomes municipal judge for the city of Wisconsin Rapids lives in the city of Wisconsin Rapids. The scenarios that are being discussed, such as the chief judge appointing someone, that person will not live in Wisconsin Rapids. They will be a municipal judge from a neighboring municipality. As was stated, Mr. Castenholtz is moving out of Wisconsin Rapids. I'm sure if we polled residents, they would prefer that judgment and rulings being brought down on them is being done by one of their peer residents and not someone from outside of the city. So with that, I mean, again, I just reemphasize that we are the council. This is one of our duties to appoint positions like municipal judge when they are vacated, even if nobody feels qualified to do it. And we need to do it, and we need to move forward so that the municipal court can move forward, and we're having a special election in April. Either way, or it'll be an election, but we can add the special election to that. So I would, again, just, you know, reiterate what I said in my motion and that I think it's important this person come from the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
Mr. Lewis?
I have basically a question for the city attorney. Is that appointment, if it was made by the chief justice, is there a statute that requires that to be another municipal judge? Or can they appoint somebody with a law degree?
It says if there's a permanent vacancy in the office of municipal judge, the chief judge of the Judicial Administrative District may designate another municipal judge to perform the duties of the office until the municipal governing body fills a vacancy by temporary appointment. This is really in the event that you, you, you know, it happens quickly, you don't have time to appoint someone. They'll come in, the Judicial Administrative District judge will come in and appoint someone and say, okay, the guy from Grand Rapids can come over and do this for a while until you figure out your temporary appointment. So I don't, I don't think the intent was really to have this be a long-term thing or to, for you to kind of abdicate your responsibility to appoint someone, you know, temporarily until a special election. So, and I guess you could always see who's available. I don't know if the motion is successful, if that means that you will then have a process by which people could, you know, apply or send in their resume. And then in next month, if, you know, there's nobody or whatever, then maybe you, you know, go that route. I guess I don't have any idea of the interest. I didn't feel it appropriate for me to go around and try to find a municipal judge. But I can think of a couple of people that might be interested, at least as a temporary thing, and I can think of a couple of people that might be interested as, you know, permanent, that they would then run again, so. And, and to be honest, it is possible that if the Judicial Administrative Judge does, or the Judicial Administrative District Judge does appoint a municipal judge, there are, I was thinking there was, no, I guess there would, I was thinking there was a municipal judge that lived in town that was a judge for another municipality, because some, some don't require residencies, although they're all elected, so that, that probably isn't true. I, I'm not sure if, if townships are, that's probably not true. I was thinking that perhaps that would happen, but it more than likely would not be a resident that would be appointed.
Mr. Veneman?
Oh. Yep.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of appointing. There's lots of things that we're not experts at. And, but we are, I mean, we are experts at evaluating what we think is the right thing to do. And we, for instance, when the vacant alder seat came up, that council, that was back in twenty, that council, the council took resumes, they interviewed people, and they appointed, they, it wasn't, it was appointing for an alderman position, so yeah, I guess they're experts at being aldermen at that position. But the point is, is that we have the ability to review resumes, interview people. I mean, that's why we're elected by the people to make those types of decisions, and it's one of our duties, so I'm in favor of appointing this position.
Thank you. Anyone else? I guess before we vote on this, I'll just throw my two cents, and also I'll have, you know, if we go this route and we make the vote to appoint somebody and wait for the election in April, you know, I'll have Mr. Hartman send out job, you know, whatever we can find out, a job description, everybody can do their homework as to what we're asking this person to do, so that, you know, because we're going to want to put it out as soon as this vote happens to let people know we're looking for resumes, so that we can do our homework to see who's out there, and then have them speak at the next meeting so we can vote on it. I think it's certainly in our purview, we are the people that are elected to represent the city, and I think at this point, you know, it's the state statute giving us the authority to do it. We should do our due diligence and then make the best decision possible. And then when it comes to election time for the actual election, then they have to run of their own accord and run a good election and get voted of their own accord. So I understand a little bit what we're saying about an ex, a little extra, you know, that we're putting their name out there, but I think that's, you know, a little bit of something we'll have to deal with. But let's do our job, so. Anyways, any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion on the table to appoint somebody at the September. Is that kind of, do we need to define this a little bit better? We're going to appoint somebody at the September council meeting? Is that what we're looking at? We have a month to get the resumes in. We'll have Jennifer and Ryan working on that right away, is that right? To get out to the community that we're looking for people. And then, and then we're doing our homework through the month, and somebody should be in place by the, by that meeting so that at the end of September, Judge Castenholtz can leave. Okay. Alright, all those are go-
Are you amending your motion then to put a date on it?
Do we need to define it further, or can we talk after we make this motion about the details? Afterwards? Okay. Then we're going to leave it as, the motion as stands, and then if it passes, we'll discuss the further details as to how we're going to make this happen. So no more questions or comments, go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes, six A's, two nays. Austin and Palmquist being the nays. Alright, so then we need some direction here in terms of how we want to handle the details. My assumption is we want to vote on by, by September's council meeting who, who we want to take that position. Mr. Katnaugh?
Yeah, I think you opened it up for resumes, get the job description out there, and, I mean, we would hope that we would have a couple candidates to consider for September.
Alright, are we looking for signatures, or are we just looking for resumes?
That was not in the motion. I, I mean, that- Yeah, you wouldn't, you wouldn't do signatures. Whatever each alderperson's opinions are on what will make them vote, which way is, is up to them. If, we've done it before where signatures did help in aldermen getting appointed and getting the votes of some aldermen on council, and also cover letters or, and resumes, and, you know, it's really up to the, each individual person who will be voting on it is the way I've seen it, but.
So as far as the signatures, if you decide to require that, that's not the same as getting signatures for an election, because there are, there are deadlines and dates where you can get signatures. So if they, you'd need to determine how many signatures, and then they'd have to go out and get new signatures for the election, so.
Alright, the only reason I ask is because Mr. Pluse went out of his way to get those, so it doesn't sound like it's something that we want to require. So it sounds more like we want to just focus on resumes and do we want a date by, by the time, by the time we want them in, or we want them in by a certain date?
I was just going to add, can we accept the applications up into the, maybe just before the council meeting? Can they come in and speak at the council meeting to everybody, their qualifications, and then go into closed session, and we can make a decision at that point?
You can't go into closed session for elected, choosing aldermen, alderpersons. Or elected officials, I should say.
I would think, I guess, we don't have to vote on it, but if everybody's in agreement that we want resumes, we should choose a date by a certain date and then have them speak when they, when they come in. I think that would be our process then? Anybody want to throw out a date as to, like a date we need those resumes in by? Council's on the sixteenth. I don't think we want them up to that date. We want some time to review.
Five days before, so we can all look at them and make-
About that Friday before, maybe? Is the Friday be-
Pardon?
Oh.
So Thursday, Thursday, the eleventh?
Alright, so we're looking at Thursday, the eleventh, gives us time to also put them in the packet so that they're out for the public also, and then have them speak at the meeting.
To clarify, are we going with Thursday, or are we going with five days Wednesday? Thursday, the eleventh, or Wednesday, the tenth?
Does Thursday give you enough time to get them in the packet?
Yes.
Wednesday, okay, Thursday?
Thursday. Looks like everybody's in agreement with Thursday. Any other questions or comments? Alright, thanks, everybody. Jennifer, are you good? Alright, item eight, consider for adoption, the actions of the planning commission at its meeting held on August fourth, two thousand twenty-five. Mr. Kearns?
Thank you, Mayor. The planning commission met at four P M. on August fourth. There was a quorum of members present. A list of others in attendance is available in the Community Development Department or the clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at four P M. Item one was the approval of the report from July seventh. Motion by Daven to approve, seconded by Maroots. That motion carried four zero. Item two was a public hearing in action on a request from Neiman Properties LLC for a conditional use permit to establish outdoor sales at twenty-two eleven West Grand Avenue, which falls within the B two district. Staff provided a summary. There was a public hearing that opened at four oh four. Nobody spoke in favor or against. That public hearing closed at four oh five. There was a motion by Maroots to approve the request subject to the four conditions outlined in the staff report. Seconded by Commissioner Daven, that motion carried four zero. Item three was a request from Rise Up Central Wisconsin Inc. for a special exception to allow a mural on the building located at three forty West Grand Avenue. Again, staff provided a summary of the request. There was some discussion amongst the committee. Eventually, a motion was made by Commissioner Maroots to approve the request subject to the three conditions outlined in the staff report. Seconded by Schifferl, that motion was carried three zero with one abstention. Item four was a request from Doug Stover to expand a non-conforming building for a three-season porch addition on a single-family dwelling located at twenty thirty-one Lincoln Street. Staff provided a summary of the request recommending approval. There was a motion made by Commissioner Schifferl to approve the request subject to two conditions outlined in the staff report. Seconded by Daven, that motion was carried four zero. Item five was a request from the Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools to construct a pavilion, considered a minor alteration at Woodside Elementary School, located at six eleven Two Mile Avenue, which falls within the institutional I one district. Staff again provided a summary of the request recommending approval with conditions. There was a motion by Commissioner Daven to approve the request subject to two conditions outlined in the staff report. Seconded by Zachar. That motion was carried four to zero. Item six was a request from the Community Development Department to adopt the downtown master plan. Director Kearns provided a summary of a meeting that occurred with business owners within the downtown Tribune block. Mr. Zachar commented as well. There was a motion by Daven to approve the request to adopt the downtown master plan with the noted changes. Seconded by Maroots, that motion carried four zero. Item seven was adjournment. There was a motion by Zachar to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Daven. The meeting was adjourned at four twenty-five P M. I respectfully submit these for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, what are your wishes? Alright, I got a motion by Tim to-
Approve the minutes.
Approve the minutes. I got a second by Lewis. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes eight A's to zero nays. Item nine, consider for adoption, the actions of standing committees of the common council as follows. A Finance and Property Committee meeting held on August fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Mr. Katnaugh?
Thank you. Finance and Property Committee met at five P M. on Tuesday, August fifth, two thousand twenty-five, in the council chambers at City Hall. Meeting was called to order at five P M. Item two was discuss and approve a procedure to take on completing repairs to the city garage butler building caused by July sixth fire. Motion by Tim, seconded by Veneman, to approve the procedure for completing repairs to the city- to the city garage building as a result of a fire on July sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Item three, consider referral from Alderperson Pensakov for a discussion and presentation regarding installation of a Safe Haven baby box. Linda Casper addressed the committee and shared information regarding the Safe Haven baby box program. Subsequent discussion regarding the program ensued and no action was taken. And the item will be considered at the finance and property committee meeting on August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Item four, consider for approval, a request to contribute up to eleven thousand dollars towards the cost of a sports tourism strategic planning proposal from Huddle Up Group LLC. It's a motion by Tim, seconded by Veneman, to approve the contribution of eleven thousand dollars up to, towards the cost of the sports tourism planning proposal from Huddle Up Group. And the motion carried three zero. Item five, consider for approval, the appointment of Kurt Mitchell as a successor agent for the retail class B fermented malt beverages and the retail class B intoxicating liquor license for the Buck Rub, Wisconsin Rapids, premise located at fifteen eleven First Street North. It was moved by Tim, seconded by Veneman, to approve the appointment. Motion carried three zero. Item six, consider for approval, the appointment of Rhonda A. Earlub as a successor agent for the retail class A fermented malt beverage and retail class A intoxicating liquor license for GPM Southeast Bread and Butter Shop, number four five three two, for the premise located at twenty-one thirty A Street South. It's moved by Veneman, seconded by Catnau, to approve the appointment. Motion carried three zero. Consider for approval, the appointment of Rhonda Earlub as a successor agent for retail class A malt beverage, retail class A intoxicating liquor license for bread and butter, number four five three three, for the premise located at seventeen forty Seventeenth Avenue South. Moved by Catnau, seconded by Veneman, to approve the appointment. Motion carried three zero. Item eight, consider for approval, a special event application from the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce for downtown Grand Avenue Fair. Special event to be held on Sunday, September seventh, two thousand twenty-five, from seven AM to five PM to include the suspension of the open container ordinance for the following streets and adjoining sidewalks. Grab, Grand Avenue from Third Street to Fourth Avenue, keeping the intersection at Third Avenue open. First Street, First Avenue South from West Grand Avenue to Chase Street. Second Avenue South from mid-block north of West Grand Avenue to Johnson Street. Johnson Street from First Avenue South to Second Avenue South. Moved by Veneman, seconded by Tim, to approve the special event application. Motion carried three zero. Item nine, consider request from Kreshiva Family LLC Sleep Inn and Suites. Utham Patel, agent for retail class B fermented malt beverage license for the premise located at forty-two twenty-one A Street South. Motion by Catnau, seconded by Veneman, to approve the license. Motion carried three zero. Item ten, consider request from the community development department to apply for a certified local government grant through the Wisconsin Historical Society for the nomination of historic district properties. Moved by Catnau, seconded by Tim, to approve applying for the grant. Motion carried three zero. Item eleven, consider request from community development to apply for an idle site grant through the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation for redevelopment purposes at seven hundred Dura Beauty Lane. Motion by Veneman, seconded by Tim. Motion carried three zero. Item twelve is out of the bills. Motion by Catnau, seconded by Veneman. Motion carried three zero. Item thirteen was set next meeting date, which was set for August nineteenth at five PM. Item fourteen, in open session, the committee may vote to go into closed session under nineteen dot eight five para one para E of the Wisconsin statutes. It's moved by Veneman, seconded by Tim, to go into closed session. Roll call vote was taken. All members voted in the affirmative. Motion carried three zero and the committee went into closed session. In closed session, the committee reviewed an update on the sale and development of a property in the downtown triangle area and discussed negotiation and strategy regarding the selling of property in the terms of a development agreement for a downtown development. Item fifteen, the committee adjourned in closed session. And with that, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, I got a motion by Catnau to approve the minutes. Any questions or comments? I got a second by Austin. Questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes, eight As to zero Nays. Item B, finance and property committee meeting held on August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Catnau?
Thank you. The finance and property committee met at five PM on Tuesday, August nineteenth in the council chambers at City Hall. Meeting was called to order at five PM. Item two, in open session, the committee may vote to go into closed session under section nineteen dot eight five para one para E of the Wisconsin statutes. It was moved by Pluus, seconded by Tim, to go into closed session. Roll call vote was taken. All members voted in the affirmative. Motion carried three zero and the committee went into closed session. In closed session, the committee discussed negotiation and strategy regarding the terms of a development agreement at, with Wood County, which addressed infrastructure development in the downtown triangle area, including parking lot development, the discontinuance of streets, utility relocation expenses, dealing of property, street reconstruction, and reimbursement of expenses. Moved by Tim, seconded by Pluus, to return to open session. Motion carried three zero and the committee returned to open session. Item three, the committee may take action in open session on the approval of the above development agreement with Wood County. Moved by Tim, seconded by Plu- Pluus, to approve the development agreement with Wood County as presented. Motion carried three zero. Item four, consider a lease and service agreement with Safe Haven Baby Box Incorporated for installation of a Safe Haven baby box at the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department. It was moved by Tim, seconded by Pluus, to direct the city attorney to negotiate a contract for a lease and service agreement for the city of Wisconsin Rapids with Safe Haven Baby Boxes Incorporated to be installed at the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department to be considered at the next finance and property committee meeting. Motion carried three zero. Item five was adjournment. The meeting adjourned at five thirty-five PM. And with that, I make a motion to approve these minutes.
Thank you. I have a motion by Catnau to approve the minutes. I got a second by Tim. Questions or comments? Seeing none, hold on one second. Okay, sorry. So I got a motion by Catnau, seconded by Tim. No questions or comments, so I'll, I'll go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes, eight As to zero Nays. Thank you. Item C, public works committee held on August seventh, two thousand twenty-five. Ms. Palmquist?
The public works committee met on Thursday, August seventh, two thousand twenty-five in the council chambers at City Hall. Alderperson Pollock sat in for Pensakov. All others attending are on the sign-in sheet. Palmquist and Austin were in attendance. Item one, called to order, meeting was called to order at five oh one PM. Item two, review engineering and street monthly activity report. Those reports were reviewed. Item three is to review the two thousand twenty-five construction status report. That report was reviewed. Item four was to review and consider approval of the two thousand twenty-six to two thousand thirty capital improvement plan. Motion by Palmquist, seconded by Austin, to approve the plan with the updated project costs for two thousand twenty-six project. Motion carried three zero. Item five, discuss the creation and development of a citywide master sidewalk plan. A conceptual summary document was reviewed for further discussion. And further discussions were had on following situations. When someone requests a sidewalk, should someone's sidewalk be installed on one side or the other? And what constitutes a new sidewalk versus a special assessment? There was no action taken on this item. Item six, review and consider adding no parking restrictions on Twenty-Fourth Street South between one thousand fifty-five feet and one thousand one hundred and sixty-five feet north of County Trunk Highway W. Mitchell Blaine from the Hilltop Grand Village spoke on the situation where parking caused issues with their driveway. Motion by Austin, seconded by Pollock, to add the no parking restrictions at all times on both sides of Twenty-Fourth Street South as presented. Motion carried three zero. Item seven was to review the referral list. The review, the referral list was reviewed. Item eight, set the next meeting date. Next regular meeting is set for September fourth, two thousand twenty-five at five PM. Item nine, to adjourn, motion by Austin, seconded by Palmquist, to adjourn at five forty-three PM. That, I submit these with a motion to approve as presented.
Thank you. I got a motion by Palmquist to approve the minutes. I got a second by Pluus. Questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes, eight As to zero Nays. Item D, human resource committee meeting held on August eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. Mr. Pluus?
The human res- resource committee held a meeting on Monday, August eleventh, at four thirty PM in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All committee members were present. Also in attendance were Alderperson Penskovor, Mayor Zachar, Human Resource Manager Ryan Hartman, and Fire Chief Ben Gudrow. First item, agenda was to call to order. Chairperson Pluus called the meeting to order at four thirty PM. Second item, HR update provided by Human Resource Manager Ryan Hartman on vacancies, hires, two thousand twenty-five year-to-date staffing, seasonal and summer staff, and insurance renewals. Updates were provided, no action was taken. Item number three was provide an update regarding a directive from Alderperson Catnau to look into, look at potential short-term disability pro- proposals. Update was provided, no action taken. Item number four, adjournment, meeting adjourned at five oh two PM. And with that, I make a motion to approve.
All right, I got a motion by Pluus to accept the minutes, approve the minutes, seconded by Pollock. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes, eight As to zero Nays. Thank you. Item ten, reports of other committees, commissions, boards, and department reports. Um, please read those when possible and reach out to any of the department heads. They're happy to help with any questions or, uh, educational material. Item eleven, referrals to committees. Ms. Gossick?
Hi. No, new referrals were received that were not taken up by one of the committees on this, on the reports.
All right, thank you. Item twelve, in open session, the council may vote to go into closed session under section one nine point eight five para one para E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads deliberating, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting of others' specified public business whenever a competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In closed session, the council will discuss an update on and discuss the negotiation and strategy regarding a Cran- uh, Cranberry Creek Landfill negotiated agreement with Advanced Disposal Services Cranberry Creek Landfill LLC. What are your wishes? I got a motion by Pluus to-
Go in closed session?
Go into closed session. I got a second by Catnau. Go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes, eight As to zero Nays. We're now in closed session.